Newcastle City County Order of Meeting to Order, Monday, November 20, 2023. Please rise to the fudge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Okay, approve of the agenda.
May I move that we approve the agenda?
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and the executive session on Monday, November 6, 2023?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Do we have any nominations for recognition? Uh, certificates of recognition? Um, actually, we do have, um, someone we do want to recognize. Uh, APCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, um, did give one of our dispatchers a Telecommunications of the Year Award out of all dispatchers in the state of Wyoming. Um, there's a little thing here I'd like to read. Says 2023 Public Safety Communications Telecommunicator of the Year. The award recipient this year for the Communications Dispatcher of the Year has been dispatching for nineteen years and has been with the community for the duration of her career. She was also recently promoted to dispatch supervisor. She is responsible for scheduling, which includes making accommodations for the reserve dispatchers coming from out of town. She's involved in the hiring process for potential dispatchers. Keeps all the files up to date, acting as the records person and is an FTO, which is Field Training Officer. She is the first one to step in when help is needed. She will help correct errors officers make on reports and helps to pick up the slack when, when needed. She has worked many hours and still comes in with a smile on her face and never backs down from a challenge. She was, she is always putting her employees before her and making sure they are taken care of. She's very on top of the officers as well, making sure they are safe and keeping track of where they are and what they are doing to ensure they go home at the end of their shift. She remains calm on the radio and during phone calls and gets accurate information and raises that to responders to ensure they are going into a situation with the most information available. To sum up, uh, to sum up what the nominator stated, the recipient this year has gone above and beyond for the departments she dispatches for. Without her, they would not be able to function. She is one of two dispatchers and she works long hours and days. She has put everyone else first and has missed many family things. She comes to work with a smile when most would be completely burnt out by now. She is kind and considerate, gives the accurate information and does not look down on you for mistakes. She's the first one to lift you up if you are having a bad day and looks out for everyone. She is not only an amazing employee, but also an amazing person. So the 2023 APCO Public Safety Communicator, Communications Tele- Communicator of the Year is Tanya Mills from the Newcastle Police Department. And she received a wonderful award. Congratulations, Tanya. I asked how many dispatchers were in the state of Wyoming and it's unknown, but there's a ton. Congratulations. Thanks, everybody. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Uh, moving on to citizens business in writing. We have Tanya Christensen doing business as Cap'n the Bottle catering permit. This is for a 24-hour catering permit, um, for the state of County of Weston, that under and by virtue of the provisions of Section 12 dash 4 dash 502, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the $20 payment, Tanya Christensen, doing business as Cap'n the Bottle of the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, hereby licensed, permits and authorizes Tanya Christensen, owner of Cap'n the Bottle, to sell alcohol and malt beverages in and upon the premises of the Weston County Senior Center for an event more specifically described as follows, Festival of Trees. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the 1st of December and ending at 9:00 a.m. of the 2nd of December, 2023.
Your Honor, I move that we accept and approve of Tanya Christensen's catering permit for the Festival of Trees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Verbal, Caleb Carter, Weston County Natural Resource District.
Yeah. I was just here. I think I was. But I did want to, uh, provide a copy of our annual report. As I was trying to do every year.
Thank you.
I've got ten copies, so I don't have one for you, so I apologize.
I'll survive, I think.
I was counting heads, I guess, unless you two want to share one. I thought I, I was like, I'm gonna show up this time with ten copies and I'll have them up for everybody. I'm still short one. So, but, uh, so we are, we put this annual report together every year for, uh, we turn it to the Wyoming Department of Ag as well as our state association, um, to report on, on what we've done through the year. And then if you flip beyond our annual report, you'll find our annual plan of work, which is, um, another report that we put together that helps to guide us um, in our yearly activities and things like that. So, um, and it's kind of our goals and objectives for the coming year, um, which we're in currently. So we work on a fiscal year that begins July 1st and ends on June 30th. And I wanted to touch on a few things that I thought were relevant to the city of Newcastle as far as some of our efforts. And one of the exciting projects that we got done this past year was we completed eighty-eight acres of fuel treatment on Andy Wolfe's property, which is just on the west end, above the west end of town out here on the ridge above town. Um, and that completed his efforts to thin and, and treat all of his area, his property up there, uh, over the last ten years he's been working on that. And so when he approached us about wanting to finish that up, I was very excited to work with that property and be able to help him do that because it does border right into town. Um, and so anytime we can work on some of that property that comes into town, um, it really is gonna help as far as our wildfire preparedness for the community. And, uh, now we see to get the rest of the landowners up there to do the same thing in that bridge line up pretty good up there. So, um, so really excited about that opportunity to work with him on that. And, um, we've also been in discussions with some of the Amish families that have also expressed an interest in wanting to treat their properties for, for wildfire, uh, protection as well. And their properties would be to the north of that largely. And so, uh, really excited about that, um, to kind of continue that effort. Uh, wildfire protection, um, is a really big, uh, program that we are continuing. We do have a grant, uh, that is held by the Wyoming, or Weston County Fire Protection District and we are helping them to implement that on the ground. And I'm also working to begin writing another grant, uh, for that as well. Uh, as this one will expire in 2025 and hopefully we'll start the process now to get another one in the, in the loop and be able to keep doing that work. So, uh, along those lines too, our county wildfire protection plan is five years old this year. It's written in 2018. And that's kind of that, that tipping point where a lot of granting entities and agencies like to see you do an update on that. And with the development in some of the new homes that have gone up out in the forested areas, though some of the subdivisions have expanded, it's definitely a great opportunity to, um, look at some of the priority areas that we'd like to focus on over the next few years. And so we are going to continue that effort, um, and rewrite that plan or at least update it, not necessarily rewrite, but we'll make an update to it and work with Wyoming State Forestry on that and the Fire District to get some of their input on some of the areas of concern that they have seen. Um, and, uh, so I'll keep you up to date on that effort. And if you have any input on that or, or any thoughts or concerns that you would like us to consider, um, in that. Basically what that document is, is it's an assessment of our wildfire preparedness in the county and an opportunity to draw up plans for specific areas such as some of the subdivisions we have around the county. Uh, but even, you know, in communities like Upton and Newcastle where the timber comes right into town, um, there's definitely some priority areas that I would like to identify and work on there as well, um, to, to not only, you know, consider some of these subdivisions and rural, you know, developments, but, um, but also our communities as well. So, um, so excited about that opportunity. And along those same lines of forestry, we are working on wrapping up a joint grant that we got through Wyoming with Crete County. And this was to the Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resource Trust. We got a grant for $400,000 for forestry projects between the two counties. And, um, all of that money has been allocated. We're working on wrapping up some of those projects and hoping to apply for additional funding this next fall to keep that coming in as well. And they've expressed an interest in wanting to keep supporting those efforts in this region as well. And so we're grateful for their support. And between the two counties we treated, or will have treated when we're done in the next year or so, um, about sixteen hundred acres. Um, so that's more traditional thinning, um, work, but it's also still important in maintaining the health of our forests. So, uh, forestry is a big part of what we do. Um, we also had some large pipeline projects and some other things that we've wrapped up recently. Um, so that's another aspect of, of a big part of our programs as well. And just to keep things short here, uh, we are also expanding education opportunities through community ed, through EWC. And that's been a great opportunity and had some really good showings there. And looking to continue that this winter. Um, another big project that we're working on with Wyoming State Forestry is actually mapping, um, or stitching together essentially digitally, um, historical photos from the forties and fifties that have been taken, aerial photos of the county. And, um, and so we've been working really hard on that. And then the idea is, is that once we stitch those together, we'll be able to import that into ArcMap, geo-reference that into ArcMap and then be able to make comparisons between, um, current aerial photographs and, and, you know, those from back in the forties and fifties. And we will continue to expand that as, as time allows as well. So, um, I think that would be really informational as well, especially with debates ongoing with the Black Hills National Forest Plan Revision and BLM Plan Revisions that are ongoing right now that we're also involved in. Um, so I think it would be helpful to, to make those comparisons. Certainly interesting to, to look at the differences in, you know, forest cover and, and things like that. So, um, so those are some of the things. Oh, and I also don't want to forget to mention, we also hired an office admin this fall. Um, Erin Darlington Witcher, who, as you probably know, um, native to the area. She's been a wonderful addition to the district and, uh, and her tech knowledge has been great in getting our website up to date as well as, um, helping with some of the historical photos that I mentioned. And, um, just nice to have another employee and, and she's really helped me to increase our capacity and, and how much time I can spend out in the field looking at projects or getting things on the ground. So, um, so really excited about where we're going and just wanted to give you guys an update. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well, so. Great.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Caleb.
Yes.
I mean, I was just looking, um, I received, uh, in a link to, to like possible funding, like opportunities for, uh, like wildlife conservation type stuff like
Okay.
providing, uh, water for, for, um, uh, game, game animals.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we could talk to you about it later.
Yeah, for sure. Yep, I'm always looking for, for more opportunities and more projects. I've got a few things in the works that I'll keep you appraised up to as they keep, um, coming along. But, uh, yeah, I'm always happy to look at new opportunities and, uh, especially if there's money that we can apply for and, and get on the ground here in Weston County. That's what we're here for, to get good work done on the ground, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks, Caleb.
Moving on to citizens business verbal, Mr. Harrington recreational award funding report.
Obviously, I'm not Mr. Harrington. I lost the paper, rocks, scissors, or threw the short straw. So this evening, we just wanted to come in and say thank you. We brought our newest member, Barrow Keaton.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Paul Bell. I'm Paul Bell. I'm president and chair of the Red Board. So, uh, first, thanks for funding us. We tried to do as much as we possibly can with what we're allotted and we stretched as far as we can. We're trying to do as much as we can for as many people as possible, best way we can. And I think we've got a good group. We've been stretching everything as far as we possibly can. We've been doing as much good work as we possibly can. And we were supposed to have a really cool treasuries report for you, but unfortunately your back pinched. And as somebody who's had that happen, I, you know, couldn't blame her for not coming and visiting tonight. So hopefully we can get with you and give you some actual hard numbers. And that, you know, that's what I'm obviously wanting to lack tonight. It was just a short and sweet, hopefully, thank you for allowing us to try to do what we've been trying to do. And hopefully it will just get better as we move forward. We're trying really hard to partner with as many groups as we can to really kind of leverage as much manpower as we can to get by doing what we do with as little as we can and make it stretch and go as far as we can. So that's what we're looking for. That's what we've been doing. And it's been going, I think, really well. So you all have our contact. If you hear something different or need to visit or have any ideas, please reach out to any of us. Um, but if you don't have anything else, I want to say good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks to the board.
Thank you.
You guys have been doing good stuff.
Moving on to citizens business verbal of the brief, Bruce Perkins, Weston County Travel Commissioner. And Steve Bruce. Uh, any mayor council member reports? Okay, moving on to old business, Wyoming Auto Camp Sewer Beverage. Hand that over to you.
Uh, we did discuss some of that at the committee, our sewer committee. Uh, we're going to include it under contract. They're the only, only contract we have that has sewer. Everybody else is strictly water. We really overlooked it because we, we just weren't used to it.
Any questions for, for them or anything from the committee?
No, we just discussed it in the, in the committee meeting. And, um, that was under the contracts that we were gonna move to Dublin, the, the review.
Uh, under old business number two, Weston County Emergency Operations Plan. Uh, we invited Gilbert to come and we go over it just a little bit since someone had questions on it. What was needed from the council on it?
Yes, I guess, uh, this opens up to everybody on the council and what questions you guys might have about the County Emergency Operations Plan and.
When, I know that, um, Councilman Stevens had some suggestions. Is that something that's gonna change?
He made, uh, what I usually do, basically the County Emergency Operations Plan is a framework um, for the county, the municipal within the county, um, in case there's a disaster. Um, it lays out what we're gonna do. So it follows the ICS command structure that lays all that stuff out. Uh, the county is obligated to have it per state statute. So, um, I emailed out to basically the department heads, the first responders. I emailed to the council, uh, the commissioners. Um, Dawn worked with me. He made his suggestions. Um, they were great suggestions. I made those changes in it. All the changes, uh, were highlighted in yellow. I emailed it back out to everyone. Uh, no one made any other further suggestions other than Dawn. And, uh, so then I submitted it to the council, to the Upton council and to the commissioners, uh, for approval, for signature. And that's, that's about it.
Did anyone have your questions?
I was gonna add to the, do the people ever get to see this, the board?
Um, some counties do public servers online. I tend to, I keep it in my office. It's there for people. If they want to come in and see it, they're more than welcome to. However, when discussing it with the sheriff and some other people, I don't really want to put it out there really nearly like that for people to see because it kind of has stuff in it to where it weakens our, like, defense systems. So if you put out like what we're gonna do in case of disaster, they can use that against us.
Bad actors could use it against us.
Yeah, you know, domestic terrorism, things like that. So if they want to come, we hit them warmly, come in my office, take a look at it. It's a big red binder. I usually carry a copy in my vehicle in case there's lots of time that I need to call out from home, something like that. So I have it with me. So, um, you don't have to sign it, but I'd like everyone to know that we have that. It lists, if I'm not available, I'm out of town, I'm deployed at the Red Cross, something, I'm on vacation, who takes over after me? Who takes over after them? Um, it lists, you know, that we say what we ask. It lists what the responsibilities of the municipalities are. You know, different things like that. We have to have a debris management plan, um, mastality plan, things like that. So those are all annexed into it. Um, and it has to be updated every two years. So this is just that two-year update. So Dawn is always really good about helping me with that, so.
We're taking your word that you know what you're doing.
Thank you.
Do we have, because I know you have the debris part in there, do we have anything with the new length though, as of yet?
Not yet.
Because I know they're supposed to open before the next two years.
Yep.
So is that something we want to add to this one or?
We'll wait probably until, till the next, uh, like in the, the cities, one, that there's certain spots that they'll take you to. Um, and we'll just adjust to where, there are certain spots throughout town, throughout Upton and then like throughout the county where they will take their, say tornado comes through or something, and that the citizens, people can take their debris um, to certain locations. And then the cities, county will collect it and take it to the landfill, so.
Does the council, did everybody get to look over it because we have it?
It's, it's quite lengthy.
It is very lengthy.
So I'll have another one.
I have a question.
Just tell me.
On this, on this page sixteen of this first part of Gilbert, who, how did you prioritize this? Did you do the research on like the trains? I worked for the railroad thirty-three years, thirty-six years. Do you know what comes through here on those things?
I, probably this summer, uh, the railroad sent me a list of everything that comes through on the trains. So there, so like a hazmat type thing. Hazmat is listed high for, for us as a, as a, a risk assessment.
Remember the commodity study done on rail and highway?
Yep.
That was submitted to us for review with the LIPC.
Yep.
Um, and it lists out the hazards material that's run through this town and on the highway through trucks and that.
I'll tell you right now, the railroad probably lying to you.
My hope.
That, uh, I wouldn't doubt it, but you know, it's a, they sent me a, a list and I was quite astonished at some of the things that were on there, so.
I know we've had two derailments on this curve down here that I can remember. There's probably a third one too that, that almost took, one of them almost took out the depot and one took out, one of the crossing things.
Yeah, and with, with the road going right through downtown Newcastle, um, with that being said, Dawn and I have actually been talking about running a hazmat drill and we're gonna be working on a tabletop together with that mine, with the hazmat, you know, right downtown with the railroad. So we're, we're thinking about that, so.
I know we've had a couple, luckily with the, the wind has taken them over and the coal and all that. It happens.
It does. Dawn's been a huge help for me and, uh, especially when it comes to hazmat stuff. He's kind of my liaison for the city when it comes to stuff and, uh, I call him when it comes to.
This is the second, maybe third time it's come across here. So some of the new ones that's been on the council hasn't seen this. So I've been through this one probably two, if not three times.
Yeah.
The first time I got put together was kind of a big help between all the communities trying to get this plan put together.
Absolutely.
And then like I said, just some changes, minor changes that were in the plan. Uh, when I read through it, there was some things under I read that, um, needed to be updated from what I know about it.
Yeah.
Made those suggestions and I read through it.
Yeah. And they were, they were all things that needed to be changed and they were written suggestions and they were made and, so.
I would make a motion that we had approved the emergency, um, operation plan from Weston County.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. I will be coming back with a hazard mitigation plan around first of the year. That's a divided year, Caleb was talking about the wildfire one. That fits inside of the hazard mitigation plan. So, uh, they hired, the state hires outside contractors to put together. The region, which consists of the five counties around here, has to have a hazard mitigation plan. And the counties is within that region and we are just finishing up that. So the state has to approve it before I can bring it to the council and the commissioners and Upton. So it'll be probably even lengthier than that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And moving on to the third under old business, first reading of ordinance number eight, series two thousand and three. So the ordinance number eight, 2023, an ordinance regulating permit requirements for entry, removal and connection to mammals as designated in section twenty-six, twenty-seven C within the town of Newcastle. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Wyoming. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section twenty-six, twenty-seven C of Newcastle, on only the risk of coal be eliminated as follows. Amendment in section twenty-six, twenty-seven C, sanitary sewers and building sewers and connections of the same to the public sewer. Application and permit to connect required penalty. Should we move on to the second motion of ordinance number eight, two thousand and twenty-three?
Make a motion to pass ordinance number eight, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh, aye.
All those opposed, say a sign. Pass first reading, um, number twenty-three.
Just so the public knows that, um, the reason that we're updating the ordinance is because of, um, some of the verbiage in the ordinance. Uh, wasn't it correct thing that the engineer needed to approve?
Yeah, Councilman, um, Greg was the one who pointed it out to me. It was kind of restrictive in terms of, uh, who could actually give out said permit if I was, remember correctly. Um, and it would just allow for the citizens basically to also have more people who are designated, um, to be able to give out that permit. So it's not exclusively the city engineer who's not always on call.
And it's necessary for the, um, the operator of the system to be able to make the calls, um, like that for our system. So, um, I, I thought it was a positive change. Just so everybody knows.
Thank you. Moving on.
Kim did a nice write-up on.
Yes, she did.
James Martins, uh, Don Thorson, Gene Baldwin, you know.
Gene Baldwin, what a funny guy.
Oh, yeah.
Cindy said, well, just tell them about life on the ranch. Well, I guess I could do that because I was there, you know? Now, before we start, let's make a deal. If you get done listening before I get done talking, raise your hand. Now, I thought that ought to be pretty good. It ought to be a lot easier than trying to select a speaker for the House of Representatives.
For the department head reports, uh, News Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just telling Greg that I feel kind of bad because I see all the other department head reports. Nobody has anything to say but me. And it wasn't a few months ago, I was the only one that didn't have anything to say. So I don't know how that's changed, but. First of all, I would give you my calls for service from, uh, November sixth to the twentieth. For Newcastle P D, we had a hundred and thirty-seven calls, Upton P D, twenty-six calls, Weston County Sheriff's Office, ninety-six calls, Newcastle ambulance, twenty calls, Upton Fire, three calls, Newcastle Fire, eight calls. They don't have a number for Weston County Fire, so I'm assuming they didn't have any calls. That would be my chance to land her.
Um, I have to go back to what, so a couple of those, uh, Newcastle Fire calls could be Weston County calls.
Weston County calls, okay. So, any, at any rate, that's the calls for service. Next on my list, the patrol vehicles we spoke about last time, uh, we did get those sent out for bid last week. Dublin reviewed the statute and realized that we, we had to have them sent out to bid. Um, so I worked with, uh, Interim Engineer Bartlett to get a advertisement sent out for the vehicles to be bid out. That did run in the paper last week, I believe, and it should run again this coming week. So that issue should be on its way to being alleviated anyways. Update on the joint powers board. Um, I received, the other day I requested that our meeting, the city of Newcastle's, uh, payment to the joint powers board for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year be prorated to seven twelfths of the total cost because we are already almost five months into this fiscal year. The city has been footing the bill for dispatch. I just personally didn't think it was fair that we pay a whole three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars when we've already footed the bill for almost half the year. They agreed to allow me to prorate the, the money that we pay to them. So if you take that total amount of three sixty-seven, seven thirteen times seven twelfths, that comes out at two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, twenty-five. I gave them an extra seventy-five cents, told them two fourteen five. So, um, they agreed to that. I do have an invoice for that that I have to submit. So hopefully we got bonded. Uh, now we gotta get bank accounts open and get the funds in the accounts so we can start hiring people. We have a job advertisement out for a director. So if you know anybody that's qualified and interested to be the director of communications, we have applications available for that and we do have a job advertisement out for that. I need to get ahold of the journal and see what it costs us to run that in there for probably a month or so, I hope. And as far as the conduit, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but they put some conduit up on the building out here to begin finishing the run between the two buildings for the fiber line that's going in. Uh, that should be hopefully in by the beginning of December, uh, along with our furniture for dispatch. So we can hopefully be transitioning dispatch services over here. Um, we have started having some more frequent radio issues, uh, over the past few days. So hopefully we can get converted to the new equipment as soon as possible. I did forget one thing in my list of items to talk about. And I'll just talk about analysis. We're talking about equipment, that, um, Callworks radio and phone logger recording device that we paid almost twenty-four thousand dollars for, that we don't need. There's a possibility that the city of Saratoga needs a call logger. And I'm going to try to get ahold of the rep for voice products and see if we can coordinate the sale of that somehow. I don't know what all that looks like, but we at least have somebody that could be interested in, in purchasing that off of us. So we can at least recoup some of our costs totally, if not all. I would hope to get close to all, but I don't. I, I hope for the best and prepare for the worst, I guess. Anybody have any questions on the joint powers board staffs? I spoke to the sheriff about the dispatch payments that we talked about last time. He said they no longer have a line item to pay for dispatch since they established the joint powers board. Uh, he said he believed that it was agreed upon in a public meeting in reference to the establishment of the joint powers board, that it was all water under the bridge. I spoke to some other people that didn't seem to agree that that was the case. So. I don't know what to do about that. Um, I didn't actually look at the minutes from that meeting to see if they reflected that. I don't believe they do from, from what I've heard.
Yeah, I'm kind of like, how did they have a line item? Because it was before the joint power board.
Yeah.
The line item, they don't have a line item for this year. Does that make sense? Because the joint power board was being established in that July timeframe. So they don't have that line item this year. They did have for last year.
Pretty presumptuous, I think.
Yeah.
They're still gonna have to pay their share onto the joint powers board.
So that, that is what, they are paying their whole share for this year. They allowed us to prorate ours.
Right.
Well, because we're shelling out the money to pay for dispatch right now. So that seems to be only fair. But they are going to pay in their full two hundred and whatever thousand that the county's portion is. So I don't know what you guys wanna do with the forty-five hundred dollars a month that wasn't paid.
For how many months?
It sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, but November of, did we receive a payment in November or not?
See, that's what I am confused on there, why they didn't have line item for the rest of that year.
That, that, that came up chill. That, that's not even the truth.
Well, maybe they could pay part of our two thousand fourteen, or two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred.
What, what I was hoping that maybe you guys would propose, and I don't know how this all works or looks, but if they would pay from November of last year until July of this year, and the forty-five hundred dollars a month, and what we call it, square. I don't know how you guys feel about that. I don't know.
What was their vouchers submitted for that?
There are no vouchers that have been submitted since March.
Then how are you gonna do it?
Well, the other thing is.
You don't have paperwork.
They still, they were hoping they'd get one funds.
What's that?
How long have they been holding the E nine one funds?
Oh, they've just since, um, this, this month for October, for October's numbers.
But at any rate, that's, I guess that's what I would say is kind of the middle ground. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but.
I think November, we can lie to the people who are full and we are getting seven twelfths off. I would say ask them for at least that.
I, I think they should pay us the whole amount, the forty-five hundred dollars a month going back to November of last year.
Well, he's saying November to July.
Yeah.
And then they're paying their whole amount to the board and we're getting, uh, seven twelfths. Yeah.
And what we brought up is the, and it's the same, I think, I think we're edging back into the same battle of the past.
But it was suggested that, you know, the city didn't contribute as much money towards the joint powers board as the county did. So that was kind of a wash. But, you know, we can argue that, well, the county probably never paid their fair share for dispatch to start with. And it's, it becomes this back and forth thing. So I think we kind of need to pick a road and go with it.
Pick our battle.
Yeah.
Is this needing further discussion? Couldn't we put it before the appropriate committee and then they come back with a recommendation at the next meeting?
Well, these, the last meeting, we had, uh, chief do the discussions with the sheriff. So do you think that you wanna talk to him about the November to July or do you want it to go to the committee?
I can certainly talk to him about it. I just, I guess I'm looking for evidence from you guys. What's, where, where do you want my place in this to be?
And, um, and, um, they're on that committee.
Ian, I think I like that suggestion of the November to the July, sort of trying to go back and rehash of, did it pay this? At least come into some type of a middle ground there and get this all denied.
Yes.
Start in with that joint dispatch, that everybody's paying in the joint dispatch.
Yeah.
And that will be, so I kind of like the idea of going and seeing if they would be amenable to the November to the July.
My only, my only concern is they, they don't have the money in their budget. I need to kind of talk to them about that. So it would probably take going to the commissioners to say, can we make this park square? That's my thoughts. So.
In my opinion, I kind of feel like we're trying to move forward in a positive direction.
Right.
Right.
The joint powers board has started.
That's what I think.
Then let's not start the tit for tat.
Yep.
And let's not bring up the bad blood. And then let's move forward in a positive direction.
So.
You can try, see what they say.
Are, are you suggesting we don't ask for anything or?
I mean.
I, I.
All the old bad blood.
Appreciation for what you're saying. I don't wanna, I don't wanna stir up all the old bad blood. But, you know, we gotta decide where we're gonna go with that.
If they don't have the money in the budget, and we've had problems in the past, right, with getting what we called our fair share or their payment. Um, I don't think that it benefits anybody really to stir up the hornet's nest, cause a bunch of bad blood when we're trying to start a joint powers board and we're gonna pay our fair share. They sound like they were amenable to, uh, letting us prorate our services.
Yeah, we did. We did say we're selling a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so excuse me, the, the joint powers board was amenable, which the county is a part of, right? So they were on the board that agreed to let us not, uh, pay the full cost. So I don't really think it behooves anyone to start a big fight about this. Let's just get the joint powers board going and then call it a wash. That's my opinion. Shouldn't move for four twelfths.
So why did you suggest us going, asking for November to, did you think that could happen?
I, my thought is it's kind of a halfway point, I guess, for lack of a better term.
And that's what I think. Why not ask?
Fiscal year, they don't have a line item for, for this fiscal year. They're gonna pay in their full amount. We're gonna pay in a prorated amount, which that, you know, there's other factors that play with that too, such as we're footing the bill currently.
I think we should ask them for it. I think we should have you.
I'll just politely ask them.
Yes.
If they tell us no, I guess we'll deal with that one when it counts. But we'll, I'm gonna do so.
We don't wanna.
Diplomatically as possible because I don't, I don't wanna get in a fight over thirty thousand bucks and derail everything. But, uh, I will just ask them and see if they're, if we're able to have an idea. All right, moving on. I gave everybody a, um, sheet of paper when I came in. That's my, uh, part of my plan for the ordinance enforcement. Like I've said in the past, we'll assign an area of town to each officer. And that's kind of the form we'll start with. We'll go around town, knock on the door. Nobody answered, we'll leave one posted. But I was gonna make duplicate copies of that so we could post that on the door if we needed to, or give a copy to whoever answers the door that we talked to. And then we have a copy for our records. We'll make a case for each, uh, contact where we think there needs to be some sort of action taken. We'll come back within a, a reasonable amount of time, see if they corrected the problem. And if they haven't, then we'll take whatever action necessary. Issue a citation most likely and go from there. Like I talked about before, one of the other things that plays into that plan is I think we need to publicize it. I think we need to get it on social media, put it in, in the newspaper, give people a chance and a heads up that, hey, this is, these things are changing. This is gonna be the new status quo. Please fix these problems. And some of it may be education, some of it may be they don't even know what's against them. That, that could be it. So, uh, I, I took some advice from Councilman Boss and tried to make it as polite as I could. And not do this or this is what's gonna happen to you. So.
Couldn't I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I'll give you this one, assuming it's done here.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any feedback on that or any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea and it will keep officers busy when they have downtime. It's real thorough.
And what I did was I picked the ones that seemed to be the most frequently violated or the most frequent problems and chose those. Obviously, there's other ordinances that could be an issue, but that's why I left a box on the bottom so they can fill it if needed. So. I'm open to any feedback on that. If anybody sees anything that should be changed or done differently, love to do it.
I just think that, you know, once, once you give these out, there's gotta be a follow-up for sure.
Oh, yeah. And that's, I guess that's the other thing I would tell you all, prepare yourselves for, is there's going to be a follow-up. When we go around and issue hundreds of citations for these violations, they are going to be filling your chambers and talking to you about the ordinances. So just be aware that.
If it's published, then they should know.
It could be, it could come with some backlash, but.
The way it is. They want, they want a nice tone.
That's to be expected.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, moving on to my next item, I don't know if I need a motion for this or not. I did get, uh, approval from the council in the past to give Mackenzie Parrish a conditional offer of employment. We have finished her background investigation and all of her hiring is completed. I would like to give her a start date of December fourth, um, without condition at this point. I don't know if I need an additional motion to that or not, just to be safe, I thought I would ask.
I think it was conditional on her getting approved to do that.
We just, it's just giving us the start date.
Start date would be December fourth. And I apologize, I did not pull the K rig off the pay scale. I forgot about that, but I will give that to you, Stacy, if I get somewhere in the twenty-three range. If I remember correctly. Uh, the next thing I would like to discuss is the potential for implementing a canine program. So I'll get it out of the way right off the bat. The, the original cost of the dog would not be the responsibility of the city. The dog we have kind of looked at is ten thousand dollars. It's ten thousand dollars for the dog, the training for the dog, and the training for the officer. And the training one time per month for the service life of the dog. So one day a month of training, and that's what it takes to upkeep a detection dog. I have two different avenues of funding. One would be through the Weston County Peace Officers Association. Do fundraising for the dog program. They would pay for the vet bills, uh, the feed if needed, but we can actually, my understanding is we can get food for the dog free through a program with Purina. And if we go through the Peace Officers Association, the vet bills would all be covered as well. The only thing that, if we went that route, the only thing the city would be responsible for is to compensate the officer at one half hour per day at an overtime rate for upkeep of the dog. That has to be done by federal law, from my understanding. Um, and if, the reason for that is you gotta feed the dog, you gotta walk the dog, you gotta clean up after the dog. You gotta do those things on a regular basis. And there's some federal case law out there that, that mandate that handler be given compensation at a half an hour per day at an overtime rate. There's other ways to do that, such as sending them home a half an hour early so you don't start to go into that overtime. Cause that overtime, if, if you were just to do it straight, as a straight half hour day overtime, I have that number here for you. Could be five hundred and eighty-five dollars a month or seven thousand twenty dollars a year if the officer made approximately twenty-six dollars an hour. So that's pretty steep. So there's other ways to handle that. Like I said, such as sending the officer home a little bit early, or giving them a day off a month, uh, things like that. It doesn't have to be paid out in overtime.
Is it one officer that will have the dog?
Yes, it's just, you.
Just one person?
One person is the handler.
You got anybody that wants a dog?
Yes, I have. Somebody pushing me every day to get a dog, and it, and it does make sense. Officer Moran wants to employ a canine in the school, um, and obviously be called out on the street and, and work the street in the summertime when she's not in the school. I do think it would be a pretty good program. I got a lot of support from the school and, uh, there's, there are a lot of benefits to it if it's done correctly. I've seen programs that maybe weren't done correctly and they didn't go very well.
Do you have a, do you have a, a, an outline or something you will prepare for us so that we can see what kind of a program we are having and are gonna get?
I can certainly do that. I, I just, tonight I just tried to provide you some numbers and.
That would, that would put it in a much.
Right, yep.
Does anything have to be done in a vehicle?
Yeah, so that's the other, you would have to outfit a vehicle. You need a camel for the dog to be at, at the handler's residence. Obviously, you need some sort of a shelter, so there's, there's all those costs as well. With that, there's money out there in the form of an opioid fund. And that is for combating, uh, it, it probably came mainly from a fentanyl issue. Any drug that's an opioid, there's a, a fund out there for law enforcement. It comes to the county, but it's to be distributed to law enforcement within the county to combat opioids. The county is also going to purchase a dog out of that fund, or that's their plan at this point, is my understanding. And there's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars left over around that. So we could potentially use that for some of the equipment. We could use that potentially to purchase the dog. There's, there's different options out there.
So are they getting a second dog, the county?
Their, uh, other dog just retired. Yeah, they had to retire for health reasons, so.
So, does, uh, has the city had canine before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we had at some point. And then, uh, what, what breed of dog is this?
The one that we were actually looking at, if you can believe this, is a pit bull. A very friendly pit bull, very non-threatening pit bull. So it's, it's not, it's a very small dog, and that's kind of nice because then it doesn't take a lot of room in a vehicle. Uh, some of those bigger dogs, the bigger Malinois and Shepherds, they take a quarter of the entire SUV to fit them in. They're so big. This dog can fit in a half cage just fine.
What's the life expectancy or usage of it?
It kind of depends on the dog, but most of the time it's around that ten-year mark. So by the time they're, they're trained and ready to go, they're usually in that two-year-old range, so you get about eight years out of them.
So one, one other burning question I have is, uh, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid. Does it still trigger the dog the way that rec, like conventional opioids do?
I believe so, yeah. So it, the dog, the dog is trained on whatever you want it to be trained on, so. You know, they'll, well, they'll detect guns if you want to. That's one of the options they gave us, and we're like, oh, we live in Wyoming, you know. Being in the school, we were kind of scratching our head like, that wouldn't be a bad idea, but they alert the same to everything. So whether it's a firearm or it's a drug, the alert would be the same. And I hadn't heard of that before, but that's what I've been told lately, is that they, they can train dogs to detect gun power, so. So they kind of go on with the, the explosives line of dogs. I think that's all the information I really have prepared for you tonight. I do have three letters from, uh, school district employees in support of the program. If you could pass them around. There's a letter, I didn't make copies for everyone, but there's a letter of support from Superintendent La Croix. There's one from Principal Hoffman and then from Principal Bartlett, supporting the idea of having a dog in the school. And I, I think, this might not appease some of you, but I think just the presence of the dog alone would deter so much.
Oh, you're, I think you have, that's right.
You know, a dog on the street is one thing, but a dog in the school where you're gonna go park your vehicle, you're gonna leave your backpack and.
Yeah.
It's, it's definitely gonna be an IQ test for some kids whether they decide to bring their.
That's a pit bull.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, it'll be, I think it would be interesting to see what all you get out of there and how quickly it stops it, so. Did anybody have any more questions on that?
I, I have a question. I, I, if it got discussed, just, you know, tell me it got discussed, but, okay. Last, last time we met, we had two, two cop cars with someplace in God knows where, with two very expensive radios in them.
Yes. It got discussed. We, we put those out for bid. Um, Dublin looked through the statute and made sure that, we did what we needed to do, so they're out to bid. They ran in the paper last week. They'll run in the paper again this week.
So everybody else's bids got to include two radios?
Well, yeah. They said we could be as specific as we needed to be.
Oh, I mean, it was gotta be fair.
Yeah. No, it was, uh, it was put out to bid and I haven't gotten any response at this point, so. It'll run for another week and we'll hopefully finish untying the puzzle from there, so, okay.
So I have a, a question, cause, um, I was thinking about this and then I read, um, Bartlett's part. So, um, I mean, Bakers used to have a dog in the grade school, and it was kind of like a therapy dog. So, and all the kids could go up and pet the therapy dog. How is it gonna be with a canine dog? Is it?
So that's one of those things. It's gonna have to be, and, and I know everybody went, oh, pit bull, oh, great. It honestly is apparently a very nice dog. I haven't personally met it, but I will before we, if we decide that we're gonna go forward with this, I will definitely go meet the dog and make my own opinion of him, but, um.
We had.
We can't have, uh, we can't have an aggressive dog in that school, in my opinion, unless it's muzzled all the time, which I don't want to do. So it would presumably be fine to be up in the, the only thing that gets sticky is you can't search a person with a dog. So if Ty comes up and pets the dog and the dog sits down and alerts on him, you can't do anything about it. You cannot search a person with a dog or you get in trouble. That's the only thing that will be interesting when a kid comes up, pets a dog and the dog alerts on the kid. So it has to be a backpack or a vehicle or something, that you know, searching people with dogs.
The kids can go up and pet the dog.
Yeah, they'll have to be able to. And, and if not, I mean, handler will just have to be like, you know, you, you can't pet the dog type of thing, but it, it's one of those things where it has to be a situation where if a kid runs up and goes, oh, cute puppy, like a kid will.
Yeah.
That dog can't react, you know, can't react negatively anyways, so, yeah.
Now, is this a, a breeder for police dogs?
Yes, it's a B three canine out of Gillette. The owner's name is Greg Brothers. He's got a very good reputation in the state of Wyoming. I think he provides dogs to a lot of agencies in the state. As far as I know, everybody really likes him, really likes his dogs, so he's a very reputable breeder.
I'm all for this.
Yeah, I like the idea too, cause I, I remember, gosh.
Very good.
Was it like ten years ago, there was a big issue in the vehicles in the school parking lot, and they had to bring out, I think, private patrol had to bring their dog.
And one of the things I did want to bring up too, um, two things that kind of attach to this. Because we are such a small area and we don't have a lot of officers, I do want to start working inter-agency more, meeting with the sheriff's office, with the Upton Police Department, so we can all operate with each other if need be. One of the things with the money that we may allocate towards this dog, if it goes this way, is the opioid fund. Upton is entitled to some of that money. So if we take Upton's money and invest it in that dog, I'm gonna send the dog and handler to Upton to run through their schools or to do some interdiction work if they need to. Obviously, to a reasonable degree. We're not gonna send them over there five days a month or anything. But we, like I, I gave Chief Bridge an example, maybe we could do like three school runs per year. So you get, three times a year, we'll go over and run through your school for you. And it would probably be our dog and the county's dog both, cause a, a school will wear out a dog and hurt. A school will wear out three dogs. So we might even need to find another one somewhere. But then give her an additional, say, three days a year of, uh, interdiction time. And then the kind of a standing agreement would be if we need one of their officers or all of their officers for some kind of major event, they'll be able to come over here. And there's a, a statute that allows for mutual aid type of, um, work. So we, I talked to her about maybe doing an E V U to start with, and she was like, I don't know that we need to do an E V U. But that's something I think we need to explore more, and that's down the road. That's not gonna happen tomorrow. That's something I would obviously incorporate Dublin in heavily if we got to that point, but, uh, we want to start working as a, as a team a whole lot better than it has been done in the past. Cause I think it's just necessary, given the few amount of officers each agency has. We may need them all at some point for some event, and the more we can get used to working together, the more, but I think the better it would be, so. Just wanted to make you guys aware of that part of it as well, so.
Well, I like the idea.
But I will keep exploring and, and if, like Councilman Boss said, if you, if you want me to put together some kind of a presentation as to how the program would be implemented.
Yeah, just how it works and what, what, what happened.
Okay.
I'd like to see something like that.
Okay.
Just outline, you know.
Okay.
Bill, Bill, I won't please.
I'll have Bill to bring that to you. Well, I will explore that further and I will, uh, put together some information for you. We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, I believe, is all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Um, moving on to, uh, City Attorney Dublin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, I have some housekeeping to do in regards to Don Taylor and Don Taylor's citation. Um, as you know, um, Don Taylor's attorney sent me a settlement agreement, basically outlining any sort of perceived claims that he would have. And what that settlement basically entailed was you, the city would pay a certain amount and, um, all claims would basically cease to have any sort of avenue of being prosecuted. Well, at the last meeting, I failed to get a motion on said, um, um, basically whether or not the city was going to accept the settlement agreement or deny the settlement agreement. So I'm asking the council tonight, um, whether or not they would like to accept or to deny said settlement agreement.
Second consensus, consensus was to deny.
Basically just falls on whatever the council wants to do, um, and basically I would put it up to a vote. That's what we would need here tonight.
I'd make a motion that we would deny the settlement, um, issued from Don Taylor and his, um, attorney. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same sign.
Thank you, Council. One update is the U B C pre-cast owner, Mr. Hoskins, he was served. Um, and I believe the timeline for that would be, he actually has to respond with an answer upon, um, early December. And he has thirty days from the date, and I apologize for not having said date on me, um, but it's early December when he'll have to answer. I suspect we probably won't get one. Um, in the event that does happen, we will move forward and a entry of default will be put upon him. And we will go from there and collecting said money.
So the thirty days would be from the date that it was served on November second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good, good work. Let's, let's get it.
And that's all I have. I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions for the, okay, um, City Book Treasurer, Stacy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the only thing I have is I want to let the council know that we, I have contacted, um, Link Tech, the same I T company that the police department is using to see, um, what kind of a, um, agreement or bid they can give us to cover the city hall and public works departments as well, and they will be coming tomorrow.
This is a security outfit?
Yeah.
Okay, just like entry, uh, detectors and stuff on the building?
No, no, I'm, I'm, it's for a computer I T.
Oh, computer I T, okay.
But that's all I have.
Any questions for, okay, um, Home Board Supervisor Graves.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to update you, the ice rink, we removed the trees, installed the power they requested. Uh, removed the skate equipment and swept the area. It's all ready for them as soon as they decide to show up and set up. Mrs. Vickers did get ahold of me about the pickleball property, court property. I'm working with interim engineer Chuck Bartlett to come up with an agreement to be able to accept the property. Other than that, we've mainly been focusing on mystery leaks around town. We cannot find sources for it. Water's right here. Uh, we dug up the fittings, looked at all the fittings. We can't find any leaks in it. The water seems to be coming above the water main to the northeast where the water has been generated for quite some time. Our next move is to put in a trench plug behind the curb and guard, along that gravel road going up to the old Taylor property. And see which side of the trench plug the water comes up at, without digging up, just continuously digging up holes all over, all over the area trying to find something that I, I'm not even confident is, is leaking. In the past, that line has been replaced in 2010. We have done multiple digs, replaced pits, replaced service lines, pressure tested the mains in the area. We can't find a source for it, that's why it's always been there. The only other option, and it's partially, part of the reason for driving for the north, north shore sewer and water improvements, that could be a source of the water. But we really don't know what's causing this one right now, other than time of year and stuff like that. We're gonna continue looking for it. We cannot open that section of the road up again until we do get our trench plug in place. 'Cause the water keeps coming up there. It's just gonna be a soft spot that when people drive through, it's only gonna get worse. We've also got one on Grove Street that we can't seem to find. We're at hole number five.
Can we back up just, so are you gonna do something to this on here?
Yes, we're, we're gonna put in a bed night trench plug behind the, behind the curb.
You're not just gonna leave it there?
Not, we have, we have to put in the trench plug first before we can remove the traffic control. The area is just a soft and saturated. We pumped it out for three days straight and tried to watch where the water was coming from. We're only pumped if the higher water was coming in. So, it's definitely not the water line in that area. But we are still looking for it, but it's gonna take a while. It's not gonna be a quick fix. We have, do have another mystery leak we've been digging on, where like I said, we've dug five holes and can't seem to find.
What was your opinion on that one?
Over on Grove and Wood Street, in that general area, we have a wet spot show up in one of the alleys. We dug it up and the water was coming in two feet below the ground level rather than six feet down to the water surfaces. So, we're still looking for that one too, and that one may take a while. We have finally finished a major portion of our updating and, and correcting mistakes in our GIS to our water mains, water main valves and fire irons. And we're not done with it yet, but we got, we were mis, I misjudged the amount of water mains we had. We still have stuff up north to do, but right now it looks like we have thirty-two point nine miles of, of water mains. Four hundred and sixty-five different sections, segments of pipe, uh, six hundred and, or four hundred and ninety-seven valves and two hundred and thirty fire irons. It's been a long process. It's been a lot of work. We'll keep working on it, I'm interested. And that's really all I have. What's your questions?
Are those new snow breaks for the, um, Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, decorations we purchased earlier this year, yes.
They were nice.
Yep.
Yep.
I haven't got to see them yet. Um, I did have a question for you, Greg.
Yeah.
Uh, the, um, the sewer, uh, alarms for the specific manholes that we discussed.
Yeah.
Has there been any, uh, forward momentum on getting that implemented?
They are installed Thursday last week.
Okay.
We've got one on Ash Street that'll cover the deep drive area. Uh, one in the alley between East Wentworth and West, East Walcott, yeah, East Wentworth and West Walcott. And then one out at the Tressel, towards the.
Has there been any, any action on that?
No, not yet.
Oh.
Not found yet?
Yeah.
I'd like to, um, follow up with my neighbors that were in here, I don't know.
Yeah.
Their thoughts.
The, you would show up. Oh, yeah. Uh, on Wednesday, the gentleman come over on Thursday and installed them.
I've talked to them a number of times and they're so far good.
Oh, well, if you, if you're, they're your closest, closer neighbors, so if people are at the towel.
I just think they'd be excited to know the information.
Yeah, we'll see how they work anyway. They, uh, they are installed.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, Greg.
That's a good thing.
Did we wanna talk about what we did or is that, is this where?
Yes. Um, Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Colleen, I met with Lucille Dumberell and Dr. Jory concerning the retaining wall on South Summit and plans moving forward to, uh, basically build a plan to address these issues. We have plans to continue, I, I have plans to continue on to the two sections we have failing right now. Looking in the future, Dr. Jory suggested and recommended putting in for a grant that they were right to build a plan to move, to be able to replace or repair or maintain those retaining walls as, as we see fit.
I think they just would like us to vote, um, giving our okay that we are for what they're doing. Kind of like we did with Heritage Park, kinda like, I mean, you know, it's.
Historical society.
Historical society. They, they had this plan, kind of, and I think their concern was they wanted to stay historical as much as it possibly can. Then when Greg started talking, you know, I think they were totally fine with what the city's doing and were very comfortable that he had already moved forward as much as he already had, so, um... Anyway, they just have some options that they can do also. They just want to know that the city's for them.
So are they looking at not just on some of the.
Well, Greg is looking at just the part that's, that's roped off.
Okay.
But I think it's gonna be a whole thing eventually.
Where the pine motel thing is, that opposite side, that is.
I don't know. I think we're looking at Main Street though for right now.
South Summit's over right now, but. I believe Dr. Jory and the Historical Society wanted to expand on what we've already started and look at the other walls, and they, they were really looking for support from the council moving forward.
Just the support, you know, nothing else. No, I needn't know anything, just support.
Well, turn that into a motion.
I, I move that the, uh, the Weston County Historical Society be given permission to move forward with, um, any grant applications, um, to help fix the, uh, walls around town.
I second. Here we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I think it's a great thing and it would do wonders for improving how our town looks. Do you have anything?
It'd be nice to.
Yeah, I, I think we kinda wanna restrict this to the walls with historical value. Primarily, we were looking at South Summit, East Wentworth, that area, because that is the oldest part of town. And the walls are, do have a historical significance.
I think we could get in touch with some trouble if we open it up to open.
So, uh, I would amend my motion to, um, extend, uh, Weston County Historical Society permission to pursue grant applications for historic walls only.
I second that.
Who's responsible for those walls, South Summit's the property owner or the city? Currently whoever owns the property. Oh, yeah. Uh, we have discussed with landlords, the first wall we did fix, we did acquire the property before working on the wall. Okay. We cannot actually repair the walls unless we own said property.
Is that something that's been brought to my attention?
How did that work, Greg? Excuse me? When we bought that property, did you just buy the wall part?
We bought eight feet.
Eight feet?
We own eight feet of the, where the wall sits.
Okay.
And that's primarily what we would be looking at doing. Similar to other properties we bought around town for, uh, the purpose of maintaining something, uh... One that comes to mind is East Walcott. We had a drainage down there with a big issue. We ended up acquiring the property to maintain the drainage. This would be a similar deal. Uh, we can't maintain the drainages across private property. But as we acquire, acquire the drainages, then we can maintain it. This would be a similar situation where we would, if we can acquire the property the wall sits on, then we can maintain the wall.
Has it, has it been suggested that we go ahead and buy that eight feet, the whole Summit Street?
That's kinda where we're at right now. We're just looking at the two properties that have the failing wall currently. The rest of it is kind of a case by case basis, I guess.
So we have a amended motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Anything else for, through supervisor?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Any standing committee reports?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. The water and sewer leak, uh, Matt, on Sunday. And, um, I wanna apologize again for my tardiness. We, uh, went over, um, outside city limit waters and sewer taps. It was a recommendation of the, uh, committee that we do allow single services to, uh, be extended out of city limits and be charged the out-of-city limit rate. It had been the, uh, um, you know, the position of prior councils that we, um, make the owners of property annex into city limits. But, uh, it's my personal feeling that if, um, we do this, we'll kind of extend our base so that we can get more revenue for the city to help with projects. Uh, it's kind of a hangup for a lot of people to have to annex into the city. A lot of other communities do it, um, to great success. So I don't think that we should limit ourselves anymore, um, and then, uh, but we, we do, do need to make sure that people understand that it's for, uh, single services and not for, you know, housing developments and stuff like that. And Greg actually had a, uh, a proposal that another community uses, um, and we wanted to have Dublin look at it. But, um, with that, I would make a motion that we start to, um, offer single, um, service, uh, water and sewer taps out of city limits, um, that would be charged the out-of-city limit rate, uh, for the service.
Who pays for the construction of the lines and the?
You're trying to make councilman.
Is there another second?
Excuse me.
I guess the motion is due to.
Well, I'll second the motion. I mean, you know.
So we can talk.
Yeah, so we talk about.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Like you said, you know, during the committee meeting, I think it's very important that we not just rush in and say we're just gonna change ordinance and it's gonna be giving everybody a tap out of city for sewer and water. Needs to be evaluated on the type of service, how it's gonna be worded in the contract. And some potentials that could come back and bite us. And we've looked at this not only for garbage, water, sewer type deals outside of the city. How are we gonna be able to regulate that for, um, not only Greg, but law enforcement to enforce particular pieces of this? So I think there's some things that needs to be looked at before we just say, "Yeah, we're gonna change the ordinance." Fill out, I don't think, have a, um, a problem with outside people tapping on, but I think we need to make sure we understand what that is before we just say, "Yeah, we're gonna allow outside, out-of-city limit personnel to have water and sewer."
Is that, there's a thing that he's had, kinda outlined all that?
It's got some in there, but I didn't get to read it all to, to make sure it answered my questions during our meeting. But, um, you know, I wanna know what that revenue income could be if we're saying that this is gonna increase our base and what potentials outside of that could be. So I wanna weigh both of that.
Looks like we need to.
So I, I misunderstood kind of the premise of the, uh, committee meeting. Because when we walked out of there, I thought it was the, uh, the decision of the committee to move forward with trying to implement this.
Yeah, was the, was the agreement of the committee, and I was in agreement that to bring it to the council to see if we wanted to move forward with it. Not to say that we're gonna automatically change the ordinance that it's okay to tap on.
Okay, so I am properly worded my motion, so I would like to amend my motion to reflect that we would have the attorney look at the current ordinance and the agreement that the Public Works Supervisor provided at the committee meeting so that we can possibly look into, um, providing services out of city limits.
I'll change my second to second what you just said.
So we have an amended motion and second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, to answer Councilman Boss's question about who would pay for the, pay for the construction, it would be them. The only thing we would provide would be what we provide for the, for city town.
So they, they gotta dig the holes and do the.
And one of the things that came up during the committee meeting was that the curb stops would be on city property. And then that way, if we needed to shut them off for nonpayment or that sort of thing.
Good idea.
That we would have access to the curb stop and we would be able to regulate whether they were able to use the utility or not.
So, which, which is our current policy, so. Any new caps we do, uh, meter, unless it's a commercial property and, uh, we look a case by case basis with that. But other than that, residential taps, we put on in the public right of way, so we have access to them and not in the houses.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Number two item for the committee meeting were contracts, um, for, uh, some of the, um, folks that use, uh, utilities like the Country Club, um, the Honor Camp, um, uh, you know, uh, the, uh, Wyman Refining Company. We have a bunch of these, uh, uh, contracts that are out of date. Um, and it was the, uh, decision of the committee to have Dublin move forward with, uh, negotiating contracts.
Do you give him the parameter of what to negotiate?
Uh, yeah.
Good luck, Dublin.
Appreciate it.
You're in there, boy. You're in the arena, yeah.
Does that require a motion?
Yeah, I would get a motion to allow me to negotiate on the city's behalf with those entities.
Okay, I would move that we, uh, have the city attorney, um... have the city attorney negotiate the contracts for the services that are out of date with the contract.
Second.
Any other motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
And just for the public, these, these contracts have been out of date for a long time, and so they needed to be reevaluated. So it'll be good to have contracts that are current.
Can I ask something real quick? For the Honor Camp, they'd asked, you know, about that sewer forgiveness, and we've talked about it. We're going to try to put them under a certain sewer rate within the contract. When would the appropriate time be to ask if the council is going to backdate any of those charges since the rate increase? And then working with Kim Stoles a little bit through the Honor Camp, and she was wondering, because their sewer charges are very, very large. And so that's why they asked kind of for the sewer forgiveness part, but since we're kind of going into the contract realm, I didn't know when the appropriate time to have an effective date for that new contract would be.
I'm a little afraid that we have to speak with them, what you did.
Yes.
So...
Concerning their sewer forgiveness, I know they haven't sent a letter. It's out of term, or they did send a letter.
Yeah, they did.
With what they're going up there, under their, with the contract of water, there is a good portion of it that does not go down to sewer. I know they have a significant amount of grass. They have, the yard that they spoke about, stuff like that. I would, I would support sewer forgiveness for the Honor Camp due to what we've seen up there when we went and was in.
Do they have an idea on what, I guess, number that they would be using the water outside of the building was? I looked in deep.
I don't know what's changed because they might have...
I did look at the appropriate to see if they would be to backdate the rate for the sewer charges as of August 1st and then as the officials in the office can calculate it as to...
I understand what the substantial amount...
Make the adjustment.
Want to put it here on whatever they're watering with. The station.
I would say, let's see what it is.
You're outside the property.
Wouldn't you say, let's see what this would be?
This time of year, we should be able to get an idea of what typical use of water is. It is not what gives us an idea what their sewer is typically.
Point of order, we, we have a couple of discussions going on here, and I can't keep track of all of them.
We're talking about the Honor Camp and the sewer forgiveness.
I know. There's also a conversation going over there. Madam Mayor, that I, I don't know what's going on. I'm just trying to keep track. So maybe we could all share it together so that we can understand what's going on.
We were discussing about putting a meter on the part that they water with and the part they use for personal.
So that they're able to keep track of their usage for like the garden and then the irrigation system?
Yes.
And then that way, we can figure out, you know, how much to prorate down for their sewer. That would make great sense.
That's a good idea. That's a good discussion.
Suggestion if that was possible, because otherwise, we'd have to take these winter months to kind of get an idea of what their usage is.
That's what we were discussing, is it probable?
Yeah. Sorry you couldn't hear that.
With contracts of this, we have master manor at the point where it enters the property. We're concerned about the total number of waters. We can look into doing that. I don't know how easy that would be for the Honor Camp to do, because I do know they're, they have a menagerie of lines throughout the facility and whether or not they could actually meter some of that or not.
So would it be more feasible then to do, like, the winter month, October on, to kind of give us an idea of how to average that?
Yes, I agree.
They don't want to be halfway fair with them, in my mind, you know. But they don't want them to be halfway fair with us, too. You know, if they're, well, if they're not metered.
I don't know if you guys still have the sheets. I had given a couple of readings back.
Yeah.
But I do kind of have calculated out what their averages were. Or, and I don't have gallons, so I'm sorry. This is only dollar amounts. But I do have the dollar amount differences. And of course, with the newer rates, too, it's still...
Because this one's September to April. So I could see this one being more of that usage time from the summer, their gardens getting ready for the garden. And when October timeframe, I guess, when I feel that this one, they're not going to be using as much water to probably April time, to give you more of an idea what that average would be.
What they actually...
So would that require another committee meeting so that we can discuss this more in depth?
I don't have a problem averaging them. I just, I don't have a, a number to say.
You don't have a base to start.
Yeah.
So it's going to require a little bit more research?
Yeah.
Um, we could, but I don't understand what, how that's going to...
We'll see the difference in usage from...
But we want to know, I mean, right, the difference between... I guess my main question was, are we going to go to the sewer averaging? Or do we just need to charge what we determine to be the new sewer charge per the contract?
That's a good question.
I would say the averaging, because the contracts may be different.
Well, I, I think so what they've already spent, though, from this year, we can go back and do something for them. Because a lot of that, as they say, a lot of that water never went down to the sewer. So we need to give them some dollars back or some credit. Credit only, I think. No dollars back. Oh, no.
That seems reasonable. So...
And then might give us some time to kind of figure out while we're doing the contract, to come up with the, you know, number to give them that potential averaging number doing that. So that might be the way to do it for now.
So we make a motion to provide them sewer forgiveness backdated to April? Like, when, what was your time?
Sewer averaging would have started in April, I guess.
Okay, so sewer averaging starting in April and then ending when?
October.
October?
Well, I sort of second that, but I don't know if we have enough in it.
You get sort of, though.
I second it. Do, do Stacy's numbers give us enough dollars to...
Let me, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Now you can go, Tom.
Okay. Now, can, do these numbers that Stacy did, can we average them and kind of get a dollar amount to tell them about? And not worry about how many gallons went through? Or do we have to worry about gallons?
Wow, it got really quiet in this year.
Well, isn't there a spike in the water usage? When the watering season starts? And then it falls down when it quits? You can't just take those numbers?
That's what I'm saying. But do we need...
Yeah. And then, unless we have something previous to go by. Right now, we don't have those numbers.
You don't have previous years?
That's why I say that unless they can provide us previous numbers to review for, for those.
I mean, that could be a danger.
So do I need to amend my motion so that we can provide sewer averaging for last year's water usage during the months that...
You've gone over your amended quota.
Uh, yeah, that's been a few amendments here. But that's why we have the discussion.
Stacy's, Stacy's calculating.
It doesn't have to be done now, does it?
No. It's just table. It's a, yeah. Table, that's the... Stacy gets... She's in both words.
She's under a lot of pressure.
Yes. We're staring at her.
I know, I know. That's what I think, too.
So we need to move to table?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move to table.
Second.
Uh, when their usage history, you know, then we can make a better decision.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number three of committee meeting discussed was asset management. The Public Works Supervisor has started working with Noble Solutions and doing some of the data integration. And he also provided the committee with, with, you know, some information as to how asset management is going to become a requirement in the future. And he was going to provide that to the rest of the council so that he could understand the necessity of, of having an asset management plan and using asset management software. Item number four, we, we have some really involved committee meetings, so. Item number four was the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. That's where we try to get some of our funding. We have some projects on the intended use plan with the state so that we can get funding through the state SRF program. But there's going to be a new requirement. It's, it's called an RFQ. It's a request for qualification. What this will mean for the city is that our engineering costs might go up because we can't just go with the lowest bidder. You need to provide a request for qualification so that the engineering firm can prove that they're qualified to do the work. So it might come with a higher cost to get those qualifications. It was just informational to the committee, and now we're providing it to the rest of the council. And then number five were projects. The Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stumpf, was a, has reviewed the first engineer's estimate for the proposed projects that we have. So that was roughly $8.8 million.
But it is a fairly conservative number. So we did talk to two engineering firms to discuss or to look and see what their different engineering estimates would be with these projects. That's a big chunk of money. I want to make sure we have our nuts in our before we move on.
And then finally, item number six of committee. We, well, on my way to Boston, I called seven different asset management firms. And I was provided with, with quotes from, or asset management, excuse me, everybody. Rate analysis, rate analysis firms. Ratestudies.com, there was a gentleman by the name of Buddy Petty. He provided us a quote to look at our rates and be able to provide for affordability as well as finding a fair rate for our citizens of $7,500. Trilogy Consulting LLC. They, so one thing I have to inform the council before I move forward or with presenting this is I was warned against hourly rates because hourly rates with a, with a consulting firm could go a little haywire. I asked the consultant, Eric Branum, what he thought it would take for an hourly rate to, to look at our rates for the city of Newcastle. And he gave me an estimate of 80 hours, which would equate to $9,600. But it might not stop there if we didn't keep tabs on them and make sure that they were, you know, keeping us informed. They, they could end up going a little bit off the rails with the hours, and it might cost more than that. But that was the initial quote that he had provided. And he was for, for 80 hours of study at $9,600. And then finally, Carl Brown with GettingGreatRates.com, he could provide a water rate analysis for us. And I think his rate was $7,045 or something like that. And we, we got like a little bit of a discount because we're current members of the Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems. So he was the lowest at, at seven grand-ish. I'm having a rough time pulling up the email of the exact quote. I think it was just a little bit over $7,000. But again, this is all stuff that you guys are getting tired of me talking about. But we, we had some trouble with the way that we laid our rates out and with people getting hammered for their water usage during the growing season. In August, we had a lot of upset citizens in our community. And I think that our water rates need to be looked at so by a professional so that we can, you know, get, you know, step increases, provide for affordability for people that are on fixed incomes and, you know, and, and have a fair rate for our town that helps us, you know, meet our, our debt repayment requirements and, you know, things of that nature. So anyway, those are the three quotes that I got. I'm sorry, I don't have an exact figure on Carl Brown. He was the lowest at GettingGreatRates.com. Trilogy was the highest at $9,600 for their initial quote. And then Buddy Petty with Ratestudies.com gave us a quote of $7,500. So I didn't know if, if anybody wanted to make a motion of moving forward with...
I move that this August council take a serious look at doing something with Mr. Brown to get a, a rate analysis for the city of Newcastle.
I second it. I have a question. You have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
So have you done research on all these? I mean, are they reputable? Or are you just going dot com?
Uh, so I, I talked to all of these consultants. They've worked with cities of similar size to us. One of the first times I brought up Carl Brown, we, he provided us with a quote and some references from another community that he worked with that was similar dollar size. The Trilogy Consulting, I mean, I, I spoke with the young man, Eric Branum. He sounded very knowledgeable and like he had done a lot and that he could provide for affordability and, and all that. But, I mean, I, I, these were the three, three that got back with me that gave me quotes.
They were the top three in the Google search, huh?
They, they were the top three. No, they, they were the ones that told me, talked to me about it. You know, Carl Brown.
He's, he does a lot of work around the state, doesn't he? This Carl Brown guy?
I believe so.
Yes, I've heard him before.
So... I mean, I...
Where's that girl?
I, I didn't get into the weeds and check their credentials, per se. I, I called and spoke with the folks.
Provide them with all this information and then they do it.
So that, that's how Clark Agarde would have to work with them extensively. She would have to provide them our financials. She would provide them our usage, all of, all of the information that they require to do a thorough rate analysis. to do a thorough rate analysis. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, then the thing is, is, um, they would have to travel a long way to get here. So they had different rates for if they didn't come and like have to buy plane tickets and fly to our community. You know, so, um, those are the rates with them, meeting with us remotely and then generating numbers for us based on the information that we provide them. So, um, that's, that's how I came up with these three quotes. And I didn't see anybody else working on it. So I worked pretty hard, I had to model through these to, to get to this point, and I think that it's necessary for our community.
Do you have any, any insight on?
No, I, I have no opinion, so it's, it's a council decision, quite honestly.
Well, I've stated since the beginning that I didn't think the rates were right or how we went about putting it in motion it was right, and I think we need to do something.
I think we get a lot of people relieved and, and get ourselves, get us off the book, you know, for doing what we did, and then let this guy come back and then we can tell the community about it, that we've got a nice report and this is what we're going to try to do in the future, and it's all above, you know.
Has anybody, has anybody considered that? They might recommend raising our rate.
I'm almost certain that there's going to be some kind of an adjustment based on the rate that we're currently spending. But the thing is, is there's so many different ways to look at it, right? So cost per thousand for usage, how much usage you provide to the citizens, and the base rate, which is one of the things that I sought for, um, on the council, you know, quite a few council meetings ago, end of the summer.
Right.
Was that we needed to have a base rate, that's how you pay your bills, right? And then the cost per thousand is how you, you know, look at some of your, your debt and expenditure type things, right, like, so anyway, uh, and I had been a staunch advocate for going with the consultant since the beginning. So, we understand, Madam Mayor, that you were, you know, not on board with the way it was done, but, um, I had also provided this information to the council prior to us making that decision. So I think that this is the way to go, and there's a motion in the second.
If they come up with a higher rate for us, then we can be heroes because we're not going to charge it. Huh? What are you saying?
I mean, that's something else too, is, uh, sometimes I work with communities through work and they get a consultant and they decide that they don't want to go with the consultant's recommendation, which would be unfortunate because when we just spent seven thousand dollars on nothing, basically. But, this is also a consultant that could take into account a lot of the things that maybe we didn't take into account.
It's his job.
It's, it's a professional that does this for a living.
There'll be more information that could back our decision that we had to raise the rates to the current situation we have, and not only funding these other future projects that we know that we're going to have coming up. And looking at those projects might be keeping them at the same rate, even though it might come back that we are showing up, should be charging a lower rate. But with these other projects, I mean, do they take that into account that we need to come up with that additional revenue?
So, anytime you get funding through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, you have to provide proof that you actually had your rates looked at as part of the capacity development. So it's one of the requirements to move forward with trying to get funding anyway. So, again, that's another reason why we should do this.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So, is it great, are you going to get in touch with this?
I can.
Carl Brown?
Yes. You're Carl. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, moving on to any other business, I had Mick Bone contact me and he wanted to know if I could ask the council. The Pro Life group met and they want to put a stone statue type thing for life. Um, and they wanted to know if they could put it up at the top of Main Street. It looks pretty large to me. It's a picture of it, I, I have no other way, he texted it to me.
Did you read it to him what it says down there?
It says, um, it has a lot that says, behold, I have inscribed you on the palm of my hand, Isaiah forty-nine fifteen. This monument stands as a testimony to the sanctity of all life. I don't know.
It's, I think it's bench size.
It's huge, it looks big, it looks really big. But he asked if, if it's something that they could put at the top of Main Street.
At the park?
With the little girls standing up there.
The girl and, I don't know.
Prairie flowers.
Strawberry.
Yeah. That's what I-
I don't think this is church. This one's work for life, that doesn't mean it's church.
No, not here.
Counsel, you got counsel, and you're correct, it's just-
Did you lose it?
This is your, I lost it.
Now, they, if they could quote Muhammad Ali or somebody, then we could go with it, but they quoted Isaiah.
I would bring it to the council for him, so, um, I can send this picture to Stacy to maybe print off for the next meeting and maybe see if they would want to come in and-
Maybe they have a different picture too. I mean, to give us some measurements.
Some measurements would be nice.
I know, it just, it looks huge.
So, Madam Mayor, are you going to start, are you going to call a roll call to see which side of the issue we're on?
No, she's going to get them to come see us.
No, I'm just saying, Mick asked me to bring my phone, asked me to bring it to the council and I said, I agree.
And you're going to ask him for dimensions and stuff?
I can ask him.
See if he wants to come and talk to us?
I can ask him. I can ask him. All right, so I will ask him to maybe attend the next meeting and talk more about it. All right, any other business?
I just have a question, and I know we've talked about it, but when are, when is the calling of the deer going to start happening?
The calling of the deer.
Title fifty-six.
Chapter fifty-six.
Chapter fifty-six.
Madam Mayor, I'm choosing, I can enlighten on that. Wednesday, we're meeting with Game and Fish to learn how to collect the, the samples from the deer. Uh, that's step one, so we know what we're doing. After that, then it's a better schedule.
I just haven't heard anything about it for a while.
We're moving forward. No, we're, it's moving forward.
Thank you. Claims against the city dated November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, yes, yes, Madam Mayor, I move that this August body recompense the purveyors and those who have presented a proper invoice to our clerk.
I second.
Okay, a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
I move adjourned.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
That's a move.
Second.
To a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, adjourned at eight thirty-eight.